We'll call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission, meeting Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We'll call the board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Eich.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDermade.
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much, Marlene, Madam Secretary. We do have an amendment, I believe, to the agenda. There was some change. Do you want to read that into the record as an amendment or not?
It's not an amendment to the agenda. It will be the same item.
The same item, just some...
Just some slight changes.
Slight changes to the item.
Correct, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, let me sign off on the minutes here. We'll need a... An approval of minutes for September 13th.
So moved.
So moved by Kenneth Eich. So we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike McDermade. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We'll sign this. And pass this back to the secretary. Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
All right. We have no communications. We have no continued public hearings. So we will now move to Public Hearing 8-18. This is an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendments to Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article 7 definitions, providing for repeal, conflicts, separability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and for an effective date. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair and Commission members. Debbie Love, City Planner of Community Planning and Development. This item is an amendment to Article 7, the definitions. They are... Just a moment. They are actually divided into three types of amendments that were done. Either just defining a use or a term that we as staff have been unclear about, or community has asked us for some clarification. Some is just clarifying the existing definitions, adding some tweaks to it to make them a little more clear. And then just some housekeeping items. And each one, as I go through them briefly, I will tell you which one is each one of those. All right? So with that in mind, sir, the thought was I would just run you through them and then you can open it up for conversation. Would that work for you, sir?
Oh, you know, given that this is televised, I think if we take it one by one for the sake of the communication, I think it'll probably be more fair to those that are not here tonight.
Okay, sir.
We can do that.
Well, let's begin...
Mr. Held, good evening.
Okay, sir. Let's begin with the first amendment that we added. We needed to break up animal care facilities into overnight boarding and those doggy daycare pet sitting kind of facilities. So we actually added an additional definition to cover those doggy daycare centers that are just during the daytime hours. There's much... There's quite a difference between the overnight boarding. There's some really specific restrictions, specific to just overnight boarding, and there's a little bit different restrictions for the doggy daycare. So we wanted to make sure we defined those properly. Those are the first two, sir.
Okay. All right.
Do you want me to keep going?
Sure. By all means, take it right down the list.
All righty, sir. The next thing that we added was we took a look at the automobile service station definition, and this is one of those slight amendments that we made from your previous package. One of the things that we wanted to clarify is that if...
I'm sorry. I'm looking at B. Item B. I don't have...
Yeah, barbed wire.
Oh, no, there should be a...
This is in addition to that.
Yes, sir. You should have the corrected version.
I don't have it. Is this the one, commercial vehicles?
No, automobile service station. Marlene, would you hand them the package, Gary, please? Hand them each one of those packages. It looks like Mr. Ernst didn't get his second version, nor did Mr. Eich.
I don't have one either.
Everyone else have the amended version?
I have the BA. I have B that starts with barbed wire.
Okay, so you don't have anything after the animal facilities, animal care facilities?
No, I've got B going at a barbed wire there. What's this?
Then you have one more?
Let me say this.
There's also B going to barbed wire. I've got two of these.
And I was going to ask this question.
Yes, sir.
In the copy that was just distributed a moment ago, this is included.
Yes, sir.
In any previous copy that we've ever seen, this wasn't part of it.
Yes, sir.
So...
This is your add-on.
So we'll talk about this. Is there anything else that was not included in any previous version?
I'll show you as we go along which one was added on.
Would you call that out as we get to it?
Yes, I will, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm got it.
Are you ready now?
I'm ready.
Everybody ready?
That's still part of the automobile.
Perfect. Automobile service station. We wanted to clarify that because before it just said hand car washing when technically it does allow mechanical car washing in conjunction with the service station. As a matter of fact, it says that, you know, unless you are a specific standalone and then you're only allowed in certain places, that those car washes could be in conjunction with a automobile service station. So we need to make that clear in that definition. So again, that's one of those clarification ones I was telling you about.
So in the existing definition of automobile service station, the definition that currently exists continues on with the addition of those two words, mechanical or...
Yes, sir. Or mechanical or, because right now it says hand car wash. So we're just adding the two words, mechanical or.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
You had that on the computer today when I went through it. It was on the computer.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Then the barbed wire, as you saw before, that's just a housekeeping renumbering. We noticed that the numbering was off in that one, so we just fixed that. The next one is barber shop. We did not have a definition in our code for barber shop. So we had to create a definition for barber shop. The next batch is all about breweries, microbrewery, and brew pubs. Once again, although we allow the uses, we did not have definitions for them. So we wanted to make sure they were clarified for those definitions. Again, the next one, as you go down to C, this is a clarification of car washing mechanical to make sure that you know that self-wash facilities are included in this definition. So again, that's a clarification. And the next one is community urban and agricultural garden. We had to define that use. We allow it, but there was no definition for it. The next one is contractor's yard, the same thing. Yes, sir.
Just to be complete.
Yes, sir.
So since we added mechanical car wash to the previous definition of service stations, and we didn't have a definition for mechanical car wash, is this where we put that in?
We actually have a definition for mechanical car wash. What we're adding to that definition under the first item under C, what we're adding is that clarifying is that self-wash facilities are also considered to be mechanical car washing.
Okay.
All right? So going back, continuing it on, the contractor's yard, once again, another use that needed to be defined. On convenience store, we did revise the convenience store. That was another slight addition, a revision from the previous version. We really wanted to fine-tune that just a bit, and we were asked to make this a little tighter, and so by the administration, so that it was very clear. It's very limiting. So it further limits the type of convenient, what is really defined as a convenience store. They have to have sit-down dine-in service, and they can't have any type of vehicle service or a car wash. And then we also added the caveat that it requires a minimum of one acre in order to have a convenience store.
So what's the... Just so I... Because I'm seeing this for the first time.
Yes, sir.
So this new definition, what is different than the one we've discussed over the last several days?
What you and I discussed, when it talked about fuel services, it said gas or fuel services as just a use. And let me go back to the previous version. I happen to have it with me.
The previous version was one sentence.
It was one sentence. So it said a wide array of consumable products, predominantly food or food and gasoline, and services period. That's all it said. So we were asked to tighten it down so that fuel services were incidental to the primary use, so that the primary use is really those consumable goods that you would eat, drink, you know, even if you're buying all that stuff that you see at a typical convenience store, bread, right down to oil. I think they sell those kind of things.
Well, we're talking about basically like a Quick Mart or even... Or Seco has a gas station, but they have a convenience store along with that. It's a combined... Does that follow under a different category when you have those combined services?
So what are examples of a convenience store under this definition?
Under this definition would be something like a convenience store that has a little mart that has... Or a mart that has that gasoline or fuel is actually a minor component of what they do, that you actually go in and sit down and eat, that it offers dine-in eating. So I'm trying to think of some of those larger convenience store chains that do this.
Sort of a barbershop or something along that line where you would have a sit-down environment. Because we have a lot of places that are gas stations that have the convenience store built in, and they are nowhere near an acre's site.
Right. So we... Those that are existing are fine. And if they... Then they would fall into the gasoline, the vehicle service, where it's primarily gasoline and they have a little small convenience store. Those are governed separately than a convenience store. A convenience store is allowed in a lot of different places. So in order to not have convenience stores popping up all over the city, we thought it best to limit them in size to a minimum of one acre to be able to have a convenience store.
Is there some precedent for that? I mean, why is an acre the magic number?
We looked at the typical sizes that uncertain places in the city that may not be the most appropriate locations for a convenience store to make sure that of the acreage sizes. And so the typical acreage that we felt would be appropriate based upon our analysis was one acre.
Okay. The dine-in services, the dine-in services are regulated by the county health department?
The health department, yeah. They'll have their licenses. They have to get all of their licenses, but they'll have a dine-in eating component of it. So when you go in, the primary thing you see is food, and you go in there and eat. And so it's not your typical run in there and grab a package of potato chips or whatever it is, you know?
So I guess...
I'm trying to figure out a business that does that. And I can't readily picture an example of it. A business that does what? That's what she's describing, that provides all that along with a minimal amount of gasoline or car products.
Where it's incidental, not necessarily...
There's actually on... And I don't know if this is appropriate. On Biscayne Boulevard, just immediately north on the west side of the street from 151st Street, there's this car wash restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Gas station.
Yeah, I get my car washed.
Buy a pizza. I think you...
Okay.
That's in North Miami Beach.
That's North Miami Beach. That's not North Miami.
But it's the...
But that's the concept, I think, that I'm talking about.
Where I'm going.
We don't actually have any of those in the city, do we?
Not of this nature, no. But what we want to do is make sure that when the inquiries come in, that we are prepared so that they can't pop up just anywhere within the city, that it's tightly governed, because we do receive inquiries all the time.
So it's got to be an acre, and gasoline's got to be an incidental use.
Right.
And how does that get determined?
That's a very good question. You and I talked about that before, and it's generally based upon a percentage of the sales, a percentage of sales. And so...
But doesn't that change? I mean, A, how do you find out? And B, it changes month to month?
Well, we tell them, we look at the long range when we do these analyses like this, and they have to provide us what their typical would be for the last year to show whether that isn't incidental to the other sales of consumable goods that they have onsite. And this is something that when they come in to do the application, we'd have to find out what it is.
What I would caution you, only because of the business that I'm in, is the sale of gasoline. Look at a company like Costco. We've got a new resident named Costco, and they take gasoline sales, they extract them from their financials to determine what's happening year over year. Because a gallon of gas goes from $2 to $3.50, and you don't sell any more gas. You've sold twice as much gas.
That's a good point, sir.
And so when you just go into sales, it doesn't really do... It doesn't get what you're after. So you...
In other words, it can't be dollar-denominated. It has to be by volume, not by dollar.
Volume of...
How many gallons you're selling, regardless of the price.
As compared to the food?
Well, that's just the issue, you see.
That's how you measure it.
Because the price of gas is highly volatile.
Right.
And so when you say a percentage of sales, well, if the gasoline price goes up...
I hear you. I understand.
Then what do we expect them to do? Build a second floor on this store to compensate?
I hear you.
We're going to wind up between a rock and a hard place.
It just seems that measuring that, the way... There's no really great way to measure that as an incidental piece dollars and cents-wise. I mean, I just think it's... You're looking for... You're creating a new problem. And so I don't...
Suggestions?
I understand the concept of making it incidental, but I think you need to figure out what that means.
How that incidental means.
How you're going to get there before you slam the shut.
And the volume of the product.
But in fact, if...
We can talk about that.
If it's not the primary function of that store to sell gasoline...
Right.
So therefore, I think that's where we get confused with the definition of incidental, because it's only... It's a secondary product. In other words, well, okay, in addition to that, by the way, you can buy gasoline. And whatever we get, whatever they get off of that is not...
So what's a 7-Eleven?
Well, that's... Yeah, but that's... She's... I asked earlier, when you say because of the fact that you have gas stations that perform as convenience stores.
Yeah.
That, according to Debbie, falls under a different category, correct?
Under a gas station. Because it won't meet this definition of a convenience store.
Right.
And the question that's at the back of my mind is, how many pumps do we have before we cross over from incidental to primary?
Maybe that's the right answer.
Mr. Held has a comment.
So one possible way to do it is to compare the square footage allocated to pumps to the square footage allocated to the retail space in the convenience store.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea. Well, pumps and driveways.
The problem with that, you have to have a lot of square footage for the cars.
Yeah.
And you could still call it incidental if you had sit-in dining. You see? That's where we get it. I'm thinking this is troublesome.
Well, we as staff can come up with something that we think would, working with others in the community and in the industry and with our economic development manager, to come up with something that we think would be, you know, a good measure. I have typically, in this case, have used the dollar volumes. But the point that you made, that whether gas pops up, is certainly a valid point, a valid concern, a valid issue.
I would feel better kind of striking this from this part of the process and having us revisit that at another month when you think maybe you've got that better defined, because we're opening up Pandora's box here with how we define this. We understand we want them not to be a one-acre site, but now take a look at the 7-Eleven that was just built on the west side at the location of the old Lattice Restaurant. Okay? Big retail store, well, big convenience store, but twice as much acreage, if you want to call it that. A square footage was allocated for gasoline. Now, are they... How do we determine...
Is that a gas station or a convenience?
Yeah. What is it? It's one, it's the other, it's actually both. It's a combination of two. And they could just as easily set up a couple of picnic tables somehow and say, well, wait, we have indoor dining as well. Is it a one-acre site? And is gasoline considered incidental? It's a merger of the two. We're seeing this business of convenience store combined with gasoline, combined with dine-in environments as the new hybrid, the growing trend. And in rural communities where you can get a lot more land, that's very well... That can be done very, very nicely. But in the urban infill area, that becomes really difficult to define if you want your gas to be incidental to something else, particularly when you look at all of the capital costs to provide for gasoline. You've got to dig up the entire site and mount these massive underground tanks, and then you have to pull them up every 20 years and redo for environmental reasons, because the tanks ultimately are not leak-proof. And you have to look at how many vehicles they're going to service, and does it matter how nice the retail's component is? And even if it has, you know, sit-in dining, you still have this problem of how you figure out what's incidental.
Can I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Through you to staff. Can we maybe bring the... I agree. Can we bring this back at a different time, perhaps, to maybe take a look at how the best to address that? You know, I can tell you, as a frequent visitor to 7-Eleven, I see a lot of people getting $30, $40 worth of gas, and they go in and buy a Diet Coke.
Yeah.
So, you know, or a bag of chips, or Lotto tickets. But, you know, I would dare to say that that 7-Eleven on the corner probably sells a lot volume monetarily, probably does a lot more in gas than it does any kind of incidentals.
And again, that would not meet this definition of a convenience store. Some of the larger... I think you mentioned one of the companies.
Barbershop.
Their focus on... Their main focus is on the consumable products for the interior. Gasoline for them is a secondary source. It's more of a convenience for them. 7-Eleven is trying to move to that model at some point. That's really where they're slowly shifting to. However, in the meantime, they continue... That model that they have now, that you see appearing, is going to continue. And so we wanted to try to look at some of these, the trends, but also not have these things popping up everywhere throughout the city as a convenience store.
And I think we all agree with that. I think everybody here is saying, this isn't soup yet. I mean, we need to figure out how to distinguish one from the other before we create definitions that you either conform to or you don't.
We're in a situation where, number one, we don't have any one-acre lots to be developed. There isn't that kind of land in the city. And so... And I understand somebody may, at some point, spend several millions of dollars to acquire a one-acre site. Whether the profits would be there or not, I don't know.
I think land size is a great deterrent to having a city filled with, you know, gas convenience stores.
Yeah, we're not going to see a lot of that.
And I understand that that's where staff is going, particularly as we go through redevelopment in the city. You know, we need to look at those kind of things. So I agree with the one acre. I just think the definition isn't precise enough.
As far as being incidental.
Or if it became a prohibitive use in some manner.
We'd rather have it in place and come back.
Consider some way that language to be put in that it would become a prohibitive use as far as the usage of that land. I mean, that's something that could act as a deterrent.
Well, here again, you still have to deal with the incidental. The gasoline requires more square footage. It simply does, because cars are bigger. Maybe there's only one person in the car, but you need a lot of square footage to accommodate that vehicle. And you can pack a lot of things in that square footage from a retail perspective, and you can put a lot of people in it to sit-down dining environment. And I see this incidental as really the problem.
Can we revisit?
Well, one of the things that Mr. Held and the deputy city attorney has something she wants to share with you all. One thing that Mr. Held mentioned is that perhaps we should define incidental, what really means incidental. Because to me as a planner, when I look at what incidental use is, what is the primary use? The primary use is consumable goods. So what is then anything else that happens to go along with that is incidental. That's how we, as planners, look at it.
And why wouldn't gasoline be a consumable issue? We all burn through a tank of gas a week, and so...
It's not considered under consumable goods as far as... That's why we called it out separately as fuel.
It's not consumable when you drink it.
Say, we have to... You know, maybe it should be a consumable, and we're just banning this thing back and forth when there's no basis for doing it. It is a consumable. You buy it, you use it, and you use a lot of it.
Okay. I hear what you're saying.
Yes.
Rather than belaboring this, should we just ask to have to come back with...
I think we've asked them to come back, but I think we really need to have these comments.
Jennifer, I want to proffer something, which is see if we maybe we can save it.
Jennifer is awesome. So scary.
Yes, Jennifer, go ahead.
So I proffer that we remove the entire terminology of incidental and just add a standalone sentence stating that convenience stores does not include locations used primarily for fuel sales. So it basically would exclude what we know as gas stations and differentiate it between a convenience store.
So say that again, and tell me how you will... Please, say that again, and tell me how you're going to determine whether that's correct.
So we would remove the parenthetical that says fuel services are incidental to the primary use and add a standalone sentence at the end that specifies that convenience stores do not include locations used primarily for fuel sales.
Do not include?
Will not include locations used primarily for fuel sales.
As measured by...
Their function, meaning a gas station, that's their primary. A sit-go, a mobile, we know that.
So 7-Eleven isn't a gas station?
I wouldn't consider that to be a gas station, but I would defer to staff.
That's kind of where we are, right? Is 7-Eleven a gas station? And...
They define themselves as a convenience store.
They do.
They do. So that's the other... So another...
The most sold thing at a 7-Eleven is a pack of cigarettes.
And gasoline.
And... But that doesn't mean that they sell more cigarettes than gas.
Right.
But that's why people stop, and I'll give... I don't... I just think we're... This measurement thing's problematic.
Kind of throwing you off a little bit. I hear what you're saying.
You know, like the one on Sans Souci Boulevard, that's primarily a gas station. I think people go... Well, actually, it's both. People go and get gas, and they shop, and yeah.
Depends on what you went there for gas or not.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you pull in, and you...
Be gas and a soda or a pack of cigarettes or whatever.
My problem is the fact that if we're looking to try to keep it from the proliferation of this model, we're setting ourselves up to be challenged by either a gas company or a convenience store company saying you can't discriminate against us.
And does the minimum one acre really push you into trying to sell more gas?
I don't know about that. I'm not following that question.
I mean, I'm just considering the business model. If I have to be a minimum of an acre to be a convenience store, I really need to sell a bunch of gas. I mean, because people are only going to buy so many smoothies in my place, right?
Can I follow your line of conversation?
Well, they, they had one just recently come up before the, uh, what the heck was it, on one hundred and thirty-fifth and Northwest Seventh, I believe, the Seven-Eleven, that's gonna be remodeled and that's, I, I guess there's gas pumps there now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, there are.
Okay, so I mean.
They're actually reducing the number of pumps.
The, the Valero on West Dixie is an example, the one that just got remodeled, West Dixie and one hundred and thirty-fifth street. That was just a plain old Valero gas station. They remodeled it, they put a convenience store in.
Yeah.
So now you have a convenience store and a gasoline, and that's a small piece of property. That's a very small piece of property in there.
What are we, what are we driving? I mean, that's a nice looking state station. I, 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 I don't know what we're driving at. What are we looking for?
But you have gas stations, and then you have convenience stores.
Right.
The convenience piece for a gas station is an incidental to the gas station.
But since they both, I mean, so, I mean, I guess, I guess what's the purpose? They both start to look a lot like the other guy right now. I mean, the gas stations wanna sell more snacks and stuff inside, and the convenience stores wanna sell more gas. So at some point, they certainly start to look a lot alike, and we're, we may be the only ones differentiating. I don't know.
No, actually not. We have a, quite a few cities that we've looked at as to how they, how they deal with convenience stores, and some very specifically call them gas stations with a convenience store. And then they have convenience stores. And so this is a, a clear delineation of a convenience store. Uh, so that we can better control. But what is, what is the pleasure of the, the commission this evening as far as direction to staff?
What, my, my personally?
How to distinguish, I guess.
Distinct definition for convenience stores and a distinct definition for convenience store with a gas station. Because, I mean, we're already looking at something that's there already.
What's the definition of a gas station, by the way? I don't have the whole list in front of me.
I mean, gas only and service of cars.
You hit it right on the head. Every, every gas station's selling something else, selling sodas, candy, food, Lotto tickets, everything.
Profit margin on gas is actually quite slim.
So why are we?
I don't know.
Why are we bouncing aside? I don't.
They call them automobile service stations. And remember that definition I had up earlier? That's a gas station, and it says that it means any building or structure or lot used for the following dispensing, selling, or offering for retail sale gasoline, kerosene, lubricating oil, or grease for the operation and maintenance of vehicles. This, this may in, may include buildings or structures that are used for the retail sale and direct delivery to motor vehicles of candy, soft drinks, and other related items for the convenience of the motoring public, and may include facilities for hand, no, mechanical or hand car washing, lubricating minor repairs or vehicle service. Such establishments shall not include facilities for major vehicle service. So, gas stations are, the primary purpose for the gas station is delivering product to the motor vehicle. A convenience store is delivering product to the individuals because they'll come in, they'll eat, um, um, and as well as buy gas, but they'll actually go there to eat.
Is there any minimum size requirement for a gas station?
Uh, not in our code, no, sir.
So convenience store needs to be larger than a gas station? Probably.
I would assume so.
Well, a gas station could be a half acre. I mean.
Unless we're talking Disney World.
Or.
I get.
Yeah.
It's true.
Yes.
That's very true. Um, so what are you, uh, what are you, where are you going with that, Mr. Held? What are you thinking about?
Well, I, I find this troubling because we're, we're really, we're really trying to split hairs and, and, uh, I, 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 I think it's gonna lead to more confusion rather than clarity because we, we, neither side is incidental. We understand that we're evolving into a hybrid product. We understand that it's desirable for these products to have a larger footprint. Because as the population grows, you're gonna have more and more people going to these hybrid facilities. And so moving to the one acre site is desirable. You maybe get fewer facilities, but they have the space to accommodate the traffic.
And, and most of these are larger buildings for these type of convenience stores because they have dine-in service, they actually have chefs. They actually, it's like a little mini restaurant on the inside.
So is, is it enough to just prohibit the other uses that are allowed in a gas station? Vehicle service, car washing, all those things? If, if those aren't present, if those things that make that a gas station aren't present, and I sell gas and I sell stuff, I'm a convenience store.
Yeah, but I don't see where the car wash should be prohibited. I, car washes, everybody wants those.
Well, with, the, the idea with this convenience store is that it would not allow car washing or any type of vehicle service whatsoever. That's already prohibited as part of this definition. Um.
Why do you wanna prohibit a car wash?
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
The idea here is, again, you're trying not to have proliferation of those types of uses throughout the city. So we're saying, look, you can have it in association with a gas station. Or you can have a standalone mechanical car wash in certain areas of the city. They're prohibited, for example, in Chinatown, um, uh, through special exception approvals. Is it, is it something you really want to see associated necessarily with a convenience store? That's not what staff was envisioning.
Well, I'll, I'll give you my, my feeling on this. In the interest of entrepreneurship, there's nothing wrong with somebody setting up a simple hand wash, car wash operation. And you wanna put those where people go, and people go to convenience stores. I, I just, to me, that's not a conflict.
Um, let me ask.
I don't wanna put somebody out of business. I wanna encourage people to have small businesses. It's the bread and butter of this country.
Maybe to, maybe a better question is, where are these, what, what zoning districts are, and I don't have the, the material in front of me, what zoning districts are these convenience stores and gas stations and hand car washes allowed in?
Okay. Um, car, uh, auto service stations, which is the gasoline, uh, they are by special exception in the C one and by special exception in the M one. All those that currently exist are grandfathered in. Uh, they can redevelop, they just can't get any bigger. Uh, have bigger buildings or more, uh, s- uh, fuel, uh, station, I mean, fuel spots. Convenience stores are permitted in C one, C two B E, C two B W, C three, and, um, in M one. So because they're allowed throughout the city, we really wanted to tighten that down so that you end up not having a proliferation of them and that they are better defined as, um, what more the trend is that we're looking for. We're looking for something that, that's not these little tiny mini markets.
Well, what, what I, what I see, if I come down one hundred and twenty-fifth street, I'm not so much concerned with the Seven-Eleven type gas station that looks presentable, that's neat, has the convenience store. When I come down one hundred and twenty-fifth street, if I'm going westbound, the first thing I see is a tire store with barbed wire around it just before you get to the railroad tracks. Then as I cross the railroad tracks on both sides, on the south side of one hundred and twenty-fifth street and on the north side, there's two old gas stations that don't pump gas anymore. They're mechanical places, which look crappy. This is the gateway to the city, plain English. They look like hell. Then as I go further westbound, I hit West Dixie Highway. And what do I see when I hit West Dixie Highway? A couple of gas stations. I see one gas station full service on one side. Then on the other side of the street, on the southbound side of the street, I used to see a brake place over there that would fix brakes. And I would tell you, it looks terrible. It's something that should be, I think, in the industrial area or so forth and so on. I mean, if we wanna have a glamorous one hundred and twenty-third and one hundred and twenty-fifth street, that's certainly something that you don't want. But to see a convenience store that sells gasoline and the operation, say, of Seven-Eleven, something new, clean, modern, where the consumer can go and safely get his gas, what have you. Oh, by the way, I forgot the BP gas station on, uh, Sixteenth Avenue or on, uh, that's on Biscayne Boulevard, but I forgot the one on Sixteenth Avenue. So we got one, two, you know, and, and they're kinda beat up. I, I, I know where you're getting at. They're shabby looking, they're not clean, they're, they're just.
Well, there's also the associated crime issues that go with these convenience stores. So, um, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from. Um, you know, I mean, obviously you don't want them on up and down one hundred and twenty-fifth street and Seventh Avenue and Sixth Avenue and et cetera, particularly with, it just makes, makes for a lot, makes for a lot of issues. And certainly doesn't bespeak a city that's growing and becoming more, um, advanced. So, but I go back to what the chairman originally mentioned, which I'm thinking, I think that we need some clarity on the definition. I think everybody's sort of dancing around trying to, um, trying to find a definition that works for both. So maybe, um, I know some civi, some cities prohibit, um, these stores, uh, in their downtown areas, for instance. Okay, so maybe that's something, you know.
You know, uh, the other thing is, how many dollar stores do you wanna get? And, you know, what are we looking at? Let's, if we.
So, I, I think we need to move this back to staff for a little further definition.
So, so let me, let me ask a question if I may. I'm just looking at the permitted uses. I don't have all the definitions. So, gas stations are considered auto service stations? So permitted uses, for example, C two B E, the east side of Biscayne Boulevard, service stations aren't allowed, but convenience stores are. So the Exxon convenience store at the corner of, of, of Exora and Biscayne Boulevard isn't an Exxon gas station, it's an Exxon convenience store.
Actually, that would be.
And the one across the street from it, which is Mobile, is a mobile convenience store, but not a gas station. And the Exxon station on one hundred and twenty-third street at whatever the, the avenue is, is not an Exxon gas station, although the convenience store is smaller than this desk. And they've got eight gas pumps. But so we've classified them as convenience stores?
No, sir.
And now we're trying to put the, the horse back at the bar?
No, no, those are not convenience stores. Those are definitely gas stations with an.
They're not allowed.
With an incidental, correct, with an incidental, um, you, uh, convenience store.
But they're not permitted.
They're not. They're not permitted. So if something happens to them, they can redevelop to the same size they are and the same number of pumps, they can expand.
So basically they become a non-conforming use.
They are now legally non-conforming.
All those gas stations are non-conforming.
They're legally.
We should extend them. Why don't we extend that zoning further? Let's, uh, let's rock and roll with them. Let's go back to drawing board.
Not, not, not only that, but with the mechanic shops. Yeah, that's really what I, 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 I'm tired of looking at them on.
Well, a lot of them are not permitted. Those mechanic shops are really limited to C one, and they're not allowed in the Chinatown district and industrial. So if they're elsewhere in the city, they're lawfully non-conforming.
Well, let me, let me give you an example.
And they can remain.
Debbie, that old ga, the gas station, a golf station, just as you cross the railroad tracks, it was on the south side. It was, it's, it looks like hell. It's been abandoned for, they still got the old lights up there from the sixties. And, and now it's, it's not pumping gas anymore, but it's a mechanic shop. I mean.
Kenny, is that the old Ollie's property?
I don't know. The tow truck guy?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know. That was.
Wasn't that his site?
Yeah, but that was all changed, uh, geographic.
I mean, we're, we're talking about ancient history in the city, but you know.
You're going, you're going, you're showing your age.
Yeah, I'm afraid so. This is what happens when you live so long.
Your motor pool used to be down there on one hundred and twenty-third street.
Well, we, we need, we can't sit here all night and discuss this thing. Do we, do we wanna kick it back to staff and have them play with it and bring that part back?
Well, Mr. Chair. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you can.
So to the extent that the definition as it exists now provides some protection to the city, that it's in the city's interest to have some regulation in effect, if staff can come back to clarify the nature of the incidental.
How it's measured.
Uh, how it's measured, then at least we have something in place until that clarification comes. As opposed to not having any definition at all and not having any protection in this category.
That's brilliant. Yeah, that's good. I'm good with that.
All right, so we'll, we'll, your, your proposal is we accept it as is, but direct staff to come back with a re, revised definition in a month or two months?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right. Chair can live with that. All right, if, if we're comfortable with that, everybody, then let's move on to the next item.
Uh, excuse me for just one second. Let me write this down, sir. Come back.
Another question. Oh, thank you.
Do we have to come back with a new definition?
No, clarified. Um, but when are you going to city council? So you just, I mean, they can amend, they can adopt too, and you come back for both to amend.
Okay, this is the definitions. The definitions are proposed for first reading at city council. It's proposed for first reading at city council at their January eighth meeting.
Oh, so you have time.
I'm sorry, that's second reading. My apologies. Uh, definition, I'm sorry, there it is. Uh, on the, at the November thirteenth for first reading.
You still have time. Come back in the first meeting in November.
Come back for the first meeting in November with this?
One more crack at this and see if we.
Right, but at least it's, it remains part of the process, the package that's going forward.
Okay.
At their eleven-six. Yes, the eleven-six meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Held.
You're welcome, Ms. Love.
All right, let's see. Are you ready to move on?
Yeah, let's go ahead. What's next?
All right, so, um, next, we defined day spa. Uh, we actually clarified day spa to make sure that it did not include overnight stays because this is allowed in our downtown. So we wanted to make sure it didn't include overnight stays. Uh, distillery, again, one of those that, we had it in there, we just did not define it, so we wanted to make sure that was taken care of. Educational facility, educational facility, um, is allowed in certain zoning districts. However, it's really specified that it was focused primarily on higher education. So that would mean, you know, post-high school that was actually supported by university or the, the school system versus a, a trade school or some other type of, um, a specialty type of school. So even in your, even in our industrial district, it's not allowed. And, and I think I, I, I mentioned to Mr. Pichon when we were talking, I said, where else would you want your motorcycle repair school to be, is in your M one? Um, so we wanted to create two different, two distinct definitions. So you'll see that we had a slight amendment to educational facility clarifying that this is for the higher learning because you also wanna make sure that that higher learning educational facilities are kept separate from this type of e- educational facility, which is the specialty institutions. Um, everything from, uh, proprietary schools to performing arts, science, technology, early childhood learning that is unrelated to like a daycare situation. Um, for example, a Montessori. All right, so that was that one.
Right, uh, uh, real quick.
Yes, sir.
That's all governed also by language, by the state of Florida, correct?
Right, when it gets to that, when it gets to that, yes. And they, and if they have, uh, um, any, whatever their curriculum is based upon, many of those are governed by the state of Florida as to what has to be in your curriculum.
That language is gonna supersede anything that we have. We're just basically tweaking it to match the state.
We're tweaking it to say that these are the type of specialty schools. Now, whatever license use you need for your curriculum, you would have to get that at the state level. So we're kind of opening this up to allow those type of trade schools and proprietary schools, such as I said, like Montessori schools.
What would you call, um, like a tutoring school? Like there's one I'm at, uh, a math school right now on Biscayne Boulevard. I think in about one hundred and twenty-fifth or sixth street that tutors young people in mathematics. Is, if, how would that fall in here?
It could be, that, for me, that would be either a proprietary school or in the science realm. So.
In the what?
In the science. Um, uh, I would put it under proprietary schools. Because they do, but it just depends on what the name of it is and if it's a proprietary classroom setting and the proprietary, um, way it's set up. Say it's a charter for something else. And they have, uh, headquarters of this, and then this is a satellite school. It all depends. A School of Rock is another good one. Has anybody seen the School of Rock? That is a great, to see those kids learning there. That's really, um, the type of thing we want to encourage of those type of performing arts schools as well.
Okay.
So, and our favorite, we just talked about this at our last meeting, elderly senior housing. So we defined that, that term, uh, that type of use. Uh, are you all, does that match our conversation that we had?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Held.
So I thought, and please correct me if I'm wrong, which is possible. The HUD standard that we were looking at gave a certain percentage of elderly. So is this intended to be more?
Say that again, please, Gary. I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I recall at the HUD standard that, that we were looking at had a percentage, and I recall like eighty percent.
We weren't using the HARP standard.
Right. So is the intention to be more restrictive?
Based upon their last conversation they, we had, it was pretty much where everybody needed to be fifty-five and older.
Yes.
That's why it says.
The HARP standard, as we discussed last meeting, was designed to keep you from being sued for age discrimination for like the villages disallowing people under the age of nineteen or twenty. Basically, that we could get away with that. You can't discriminate on any other basis, but you can discriminate on age because we're, we don't like kids. I mean, or that's, I'm making that, that's not what HARP actually said. But the HUD standard for senior housing was everybody needed to be sixty-two or older. Basically, that's the age you collect a social security check, but we said fifty-five and older. And if you, and my theory is if you wanna get reduced parking, that's the only thing that in a city, I mean, you, other, the other allowances we're making, we're reducing your parking requirement from one point five spaces to one. If we're gonna reduce it, then you need to be senior housing, and everybody's fifty-five years old or older. If you don't want that, if you want the kids to live, if you want, me, I'm fifty-five, and my twenty-nine-year-old wife and my nineteen-year-old kid, I can't get away with one car. So if you're gonna go for that, then you just need to be. So if you're gonna go for that, then you just need to be a regular house. If you're gonna try to get the effect of reduced housing, I think you're gonna need to have elderly inhabitants.
So you can have housing that has partial residence over fifty five, but you wouldn't qualify for the enhanced parking regulations?
Correct, right. Of course you can have that. That would be, then you'd be subject to the mixed, uh the multifamily. So i- in order to do that, everyone has to be fifty five and older. That was part of the conversation we had, and we didn't put a recommendation in there uh to add that to the the parking table. So we, because we were going to make sure that it was clarified in the definition.
And we actually did that, I think. We promote, we pushed that forward, even though we were a little out of cart and horse kind of thing last time, but.
Right, yeah, yeah. We put, we didn't say that because this is how we were defining it. So it's not, that in the staff report, it's only the add-on of the five percent um parking, um yeah, guest parking.
Okay.
Okay, move on.
All right, so that's the, they have to do that in order to get that bonus. Uh right, let's go.
Farmers market.
Farmers market. This is a conversation that we had, and I think um with a couple of you all. And I think that there were some additional thought. And I I talked to, afterwards, I actually talked to um uh the planning director. Who agreed with one of the recommendations that came from Mr. McDermott. If you would like to talk about your suggested amendment to that?
To which, I'm sorry.
To farmers market?
Oh, um. Yeah, we talked about it. What was the um?
Would you like for me?
There's a certain area that you put it in.
Would you, would you like for me?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Um uh Mr. McDermott's suggested amendment is, the the idea here is to, well. In a normal farmer's market, it's all about local, local produce, local foods. So we put a lot of local items in there. However, one suggestion that um I happened to talk to my boss, and she really liked the idea as well. Is it where it says two or more farmer producers, say, local vendors. And then add to after the ready-to-eat foods, have a comma that says local artisan products. That are locally with their, uh either locally produced artisans products.
Because as we, as we discussed, my my concern with this, I love the idea of a farmer's market. It it we listed what can be there, and I was concerned about what shouldn't be there. You know, I don't want Miami Beach t-shirts. You know, the difference between a farmer's market and a flea market.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, Bob.
If somebody's making t-shirts and they're hand painting them themselves, and there's an artistic value to all of that, I'm okay with that.
Right. Well, that's why, when I discussed with, when I discussed with Debbie, that's what we were trying, that's what we were trying to do, that's what we were trying to get at.
So do you all like the idea?
To make sure you don't have some corporation come in and, you know, try and-
Well, Biden sold imported Chinese stuff that, you know, just, because it's a retail spot.
Right.
So do you all like the idea of turning it from farmer producers to local vendors? And do you like the idea of adding local artisanal produced products?
I have a problem with that only because I'm familiar with what they have in Washington DC and Georgetown. They allow farmers to come in from Virginia with really great looking vegetables and fruit and stuff. And a lot of fruit and vegetables aren't grown here in North Miami, but they come from Lake Okeechobee. Or their fishermen in the Keys bring up seafood. So if we say local, then we may not be really getting products that might be better quality. But are are something that our our consumers here in North Miami would buy. They would welcome the opportunity if somebody came in with fresh stone crabs or fresh, fresh fruit from um-
Stuff from Homestead.
From Homestead or the Redland or or even Okeechobee. You can't go to Publix and buy local fruit.
You wanna say local or or do you wanna say within South Florida vendors?
Where's locally sourced meats come from? Are any of that in South Florida?
Well, locally, yeah, it's South Florida.
Really?
Yeah, locally grown.
Well.
Locally grown, I think we cover it.
Regionally grown? I don't, I mean, I don't know whether you would.
Because I get where you're going. What do you think, Jennifer?
Well, you say locally sourced, but I mean, someone local is sourcing it, not necessarily locally, but maybe even from another state. You're not saying locally grown, locally raised, you're saying locally sourced.
Yeah, I I could say within the state of Florida, but but you can't.
Within the region or regional, say regional?
I I would say within the state so that you're defining it that way because you've got a lot of cattle ranching going on upstate.
Right.
I think your current definition covers it. If you look, it, the, what you're saying is it's locally sourced meat, seafood, poultry, honey, all those products. Locally sourced doesn't necessarily mean locally grown or locally raised. It means that a local person, a local farmer producer is sourcing those products. Presumably somewhere local, but maybe from an alternate location if it's-
I'm comfortable with locally sourced.
Yeah, I'm 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 comfortable with the line.
I don't know what that means. Sorry.
All right, so how will this read?
I only know because my my, I I don't know from-
I was in Wyoming last week and at a farmer's market, and they had goat cheese from Idaho. Is that?
That means that they're sourcing it. Sourcing it from Idaho.
Right.
They're getting a source of the product.
It was the actual farmer from Idaho came, came across the border into Wyoming. So I mean, the state of Florida is really big. I would, I would think that we should at least expand it to the state.
To the state. But should we say though that that we want local vendors to come? Or do you want to have outside vendors from all over Florida coming to this farmer's market? Or do you wanna make it where you have local vendors who are who are sourcing it?
Well, if you've got people coming up from the Redlands or Homestead or the Key Largo with a bunch of stone crabs, that's, that's not local, but I'm I'm good with that.
Yeah, we're good with it, so I mean, we are.
Let's find the ways to remove amendments and the local.
With the locally sourced, okay. So shall we change the farmer producers to local vendors? And then add the caveat for locally, local artisanal products or because we're not adding-
Or with a product.
Now, the uh now, the reason that we're expanding it beyond foodstuffs, right now this is all foodstuffs. Is something that Mr. McDermott mentioned and that that my boss also mentioned. Well, what about the lady that makes beautiful locally um designed jewelry? Right?
I, to me, a farmer's market is food product, and I would like to leave it at that. There's other opportunities where they could go to a flea market or to a a a local bazaar. There's plenty of opportunities for those types of vendors. Because trust me, if you open that up, you're gonna have more jewelry than you're gonna have food showing up at the, at this farmer's market. So I would, I would, I would advocate that we, we only leave it at food. I don't know how anybody else would do that.
Well, I I understand your your concerns with that one, Charlie. Um you know, again, I I don't wanna discourage an entrepreneur. But I don't view jewelry and clothing as part of a farmer's market. Farmer's market should be food-based product. Should all be edible one way or another.
Well, you know, we have a farmer's market that's opening up right over here.
Uh what does right over here mean?
On the twenty fifth street, right next to the Tate Building. And I think that Laura Hill is-
Next to the Tate Building?
Yes, in that lot, between Tate Building and the, and the subsequent building. And I I I believe, and I may be totally incorrect, but you know, I think they're gonna have more than just food there.
See, and that just gets into a serious question. Are we doing a flea market or are we doing a farmer's market?
Right. So if we're gonna define farmer's market as we have it here, I I would encourage us to seriously just consider food products and and nothing else. And if they wanted, if they wanna open up any kind of other market, then that would be defined with with something as along the lines of a-
So you really gotta say-
A bazaar or a-
You really gotta say agricultural and food products, right?
Artisan market, right.
Because you're getting in the stone crabs we talked about. That's, I'm not sure.
That's the reason I put seafood in there.
We're all going to Joe's after this, right?
I can understand the need for the agricultural and food-based product as opposed to the flea market concept. And not opposed to doing flea markets, but if we're gonna call it a farmer's market, let's make it a farmer's market. And 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 poultry and and fish product are certainly welcome uh within the definition of a farmer's market.
All right.
What was the phrase that was just used about um in reference to, I think, Bob, you, who was it, just made the um comment about locally grown or sourced?
Yeah, it's actually, actually it's in the definition.
Yeah.
It's in the definition.
So locally sourced means you you have an agent here who buys it upstate, but it it's-
Locally sourced food.
He's considered local source. Okay.
In other words, he's he's not, he's not going to Publix buying food and reselling it. That's what we're saying.
Right, right.
Or or any other.
I think that's where everybody's going with it.
Chaney Brothers or somebody else that has a warehouse that they're gonna go buy that food and bring it to the flea flea market. This is, we're looking at locally sourced. It's been grown by somebody. They're they're asking for an agent. But they're not using a wholesale market provider or or a provisioner to provide them the product. It's it's basically, you know, coming fresh from one hand to the market, not going through-
Well, that's basically-
Through a supermarket or any other other form.
And that includes guys cooking stuff, right?
Well, if you read the definition as it is. You read the definition as it is, it pretty much says all that.
Could you go to the yellow green?
Find the geography of it?
Did you go up to the yellow green market up in in Broward?
Source meat, seafood, poultry, honey, dairy.
I mean, that's the spectacular. It's open Saturdays and Sundays, and it's, it's, it's a farmer's market and guys cooking, and it's, it's special.
I think the far is pretty large.
It's called the yellow green market. It is unbelievable.
So as as we're having our side conversations here, up up.
All right. For a flea market. Yeah. We're trying to get a common sense of staff.
Venison. Right.
We need a consensus here.
And locally sourced means I could have a connection upstate that I can get that buffalo bison burger.
Yeah.
Right.
But if you're saying within the geographical region of Florida, you're not gonna get buffalo.
Got it.
No, well, that won't be part of your farmer's market.
The part of the conversation that staff wanted to clarify is whether or not we wanted to say locally sourced within Florida. And have a ge- have that geographic limitation. And as the deputy city attorney mentioned, if you do that, you're limiting yourself to not being able to get venison or, I mean, not venison, uh buffalo or bison or. So do you all want to do that? Uh she's, this, it, staff is recommending not. But of course, it's the will of the commission is whether you want to limit that.
Do you think bison really a good, really belongs in a Florida farmer's market?
No.
Well, it it wouldn't in Florida, but it certainly would in Wyoming.
Are you saying?
I uh, you know, you know, I I I look at this and I think you you might-
Yes.
Have an entirely different perspective if you run the the Florida Georgia border or the Florida Alabama border.
Right, but we're not.
You might have alternative items that you'd consider locally sourced.
Right. So the the reason we're asking is that, do you wish to do that? Staff is supportive of keeping it here, you know, within the, within the Florida state. But do you all wish to define it?
Well, why even, why even mention?
Why even, why are we even?
Why are we even going there? I mean, who checks it? You you have somebody coming in from Okeechobee, and he's gonna bring a dozen oysters. Who cares? I don't think you need to to do a geographic because it's already in all-inclusive. And you're limiting to, farmer's market means an open-air event where two or more farmer producers sell their own agricultural products directly to the public. They could come from anywhere in Florida, uh including fruits and vegetables and locally sourced meat, seafood, poultry, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it it's, it says right there, farmer, in an open-air event where two or more farmer producers, but it doesn't, they could come from anywhere. So as long as they fit that description, you know, the only thing that I think that that we were, the only addition we were discussing was if you had local artisans who did jewelry or art or something of that sort. Okay, if we've eliminating that, then this as stands seems pretty inclusive.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I I doubt very seriously you're gonna have somebody coming from Georgia all the way down to sell the food. I mean, we're we're getting on the absurd here. I mean, this is, they're gonna bring Georgia peaches all the way down. Come on. Why don't, why don't we just strike the word locally sourced and and go from there?
Mr. Chairman, Council has a question.
Mr. Halt.
So in in trying to assist, I did a Google search of the term locally sourced. And the response was, it's very ambiguous that having a geographic definition provides clarity. So if you're willing to leave some future interpretation to staff in response to a request or possibly a code compliance officer issuing a violation because something came from elsewhere and they didn't think it was locally sourced. I mean, it it creates an ambiguity if you don't have clarity.
So you're saying is we have to define locally sources being tied to the state of Florida?
Well, that's one alternative, and I think both staff and I agreed with the chair on as an alternative that was desirable.
Okay, I, the chair can accept. I mean, I would just as soon put it in and then wait and have somebody petition us to sell their fresh bison, you know, and then let's, let's deal, that is an exception if we need to.
Or Georgia peaches.
Let's just put it in.
Or ostrich.
What are we putting in the, the line of?
From where?
Your time will come.
I I would just strike really short, but I don't, I don't know.
That's okay.
I just leave it the way it is. I I don't, okay, can we move on?
I can accept what we've got. I can also go with, you know, if you wanna do a geographic limit, but didn't have to cover the entire state of Florida.
Well, if our, if our, if our, if our attorney believes that Florida should be inserted, and I think we should go with that.
To be quite honest, the city is fine with the the language as proffered, as written.
You're fine with?
I am too.
I am too.
She has to, she has to to defend it.
Okay. I am too.
We're just trying to challenge you, Jennifer, that's all. We, we're waiting to see you before the third district on something.
So no artisan, no art, no art?
No.
Only food consumable type of things.
Now, you can have an art bazaar on the same site at one aisle over if you call it that.
Okay, all right, all right.
But that's not part of the farmer's market. That would have to have a separate structure.
All right.
All right.
Okay, all right. So we'll go on now to the next. Uh let's see, floating vessel platform. This particular uh piece of these two, there are two definitions, the floating vessel platform and the hydrohoist. This is, what we do, wanted to do is to amend the floating vessel platform definition. Because it called for registration. And because it requires administrative site plan approval, that's already a form of registration. So we felt that that was just needed a little cleanup, a little housekeeping. However, when we um actually look closer, and thank you, Mr. Pichon, um for your eagle eyes. There were two definitions in there, the floating vessel platform and then right after that, the hydrohoist. It actually is the same thing. So we believe that 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 one can be deleted in its entirety. So you'll see here that it's deleted in its entirety. Uh industrial light, we added the packing as a, you know, part of the type of allowable activity under that use. So that you could, because industrial light activity only had a certain um number of things in there. Packing should have been one of those, and it just was not, so.
It's rather hard to produce it if you can't pack it to ship it, yeah.
Or it could be just a, you know, just you're just packing things, you know, in boxes.
Could you just have a slight, I would say and/or?
And/or packing?
So it doesn't have to be all of them? It could be some of them?
Uh assembly packing and processing. And/or?
Manufacturing, assembly packing, and/or processing.
And/or.
Which would mean any one of them could be.
One of those. Okay, all right.
Industrial.
All right, we.
All right, so we agree with that?
And the same thing for light.
All right, okay. All right, so we'll keep moving.
Oh, one more thing?
Yes, go.
Transmission of TV and radio, uh we, should we say signals?
I don't know. That's, that's language, existing language.
Existing language, but it seems, I mean, what are you transmitting? Not TVs.
Transmission of TV and radio.
Signals.
Yeah, signal would should be in there because that's the intent, and we didn't say it.
Okay. Signals, okay. Like wireless facilities, okay.
See.
All right. Um we never had a heavy industrial definition, which is really critical in a community to define your heavy industrial uses. So we define that use. Laundromat, once again, didn't have a definition for it. Um we we allow live, live work units, didn't define it, so we needed to define it. The next three items.
I have a question on that.
On which one? What what?
On the um, on the live and work unit. Currently, anyone um- Uh, currently, anyone, um, you can have a home office. Home offices would not fall under this, correct?
Not necessarily, a home office is the, it's where you're, you're home, you just have an office. A live work unit is essentially um, where you have, the housekeeping is upstairs. The live work unit is in the lower level.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there, that we do have a distinct, uh, uh, there's distinguished language for both, correct?
Yes, sir, there certainly are.
Thank you.
These next three terms are critical for us to have, be, y'all, I'm so sorry, Mr. McDermott.
Can I back up?
Yes, sir, my apologies.
Okay, under the, uh, uh, under the laundromat?
Yes, sir.
Um, I understand that we don't want, I understand with the exclusion of professional dry cleaning services because of the environmental issues and the equipment and all that other thing. But most of the current laundromats in North Miami have a drop-off dry cleaning, where they send it out to someone, and then they, and they bring it back. Almost all of them already have it. So, if you exclude professional dry cleaning services, that would exclude somebody from just dropping off something to be sent out to a dry cleaning plant to be done. And all of the, all of them are, you know, are, you know, I mean, I understand you don't want dry cleaning plants in the city because of numerous things, but
You wanted to say onsite?
Most of the laundromats currently, most of the laundromats currently have, where you, where you drop and fold it, you drop off, and they send it out to some outside facility, and then, um, so that already exists, so.
Well, that, that could easily be fixed by adding, right after you say dropping off clothing to be washed, dried, and folded, fluffed, folded onsite. Or sent out for dry cleaning at an offsite facility.
I agree, if you put, you stick that language in there.
Stick that language in there.
The last sentence, you can just insert the word onsite, this definition excludes onsite professional dry cleaning services.
Onsite.
Onsite.
All good, okay.
Alright.
Alright, so this definition excludes onsite professional dry cleaning services.
Exactly.
Dry cleaning services, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so, let's.
Actually, if you said professional dry cleaning and left off the word services.
Professional dry cleaning?
Because, you see, when you get into services.
No, no, leave it alone.
You get into. Does he, you, you? Well, because services means drop it off and we'll take it down, down the street to the next city and have it done over there, that's a service.
Onsite dry cleaning.
Right.
I, I, I think that's a, I think that's a good.
Onsite professional dry cleaning, period?
Period.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did you finish?
Jennifer, you okay with that?
It's a good catch, Kevin.
Live work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so.
Make credit for one every night, you know?
The city attorney and your attorney agree that that's a, that's, that's a good suggestion.
We have two lawyers in the house that agree.
Amazing.
Yes, yes, so it's, it's, it's awesome.
Yes, it is.
So, let's talk about marijuana. Um, we allow marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries and medical marijuana in the city, however, we've never defined it. Um, and you'll see that what we have deferred to it for the definition of marijuana is actually what the state, whatever the state has defined it. So, whenever they change their definition, we don't have to go in and change our, our code. Um, I want to explain the different, the two, the, what, the difference between a medical marijuana dispensary and the treatment center. The treatment center, there's only ten entities licensed in the state of Florida to actually grow, uh, process. They can make oils, they can make food, they can make all of the stuff.
That go to the farmer's market?
Alright, wait a second, I'm gonna check that. Um, and these, the, the treatment centers are the big dog licenses. So, uh, then what they have, then, they can actually deliver to your home. Uh, you can't go there and pick it up, but they can deliver to your home. However, you, if they happen to have dispensaries, then you can go to the dispensary and pick up from a dispensary. But you have to have this card, you have to be, you know, have approvals.
Are they allowed to cohabitate, or, maybe that's the wrong word, are they allowed to coexist?
Coexist in the same city, potentially, yes. But remember, the, there's only ten entities that are licensed in the state of Florida currently for these treatment centers. And there, it's really, really hard to get any more licenses for that big umbrella of cultivation. Um, dispensaries, you don't cultivate, it's just the product. Uh, so that, I wanted to explain the two to you. Uh, because we're going to see later, as we continue to move this, that we could potentially have a treatment center. Or we could potentially have dispensaries here, primarily dispensaries, we're getting a lot of inquiries about dispensaries. Now, we'll move on to the next, yes, Mr. Halt?
In front of Department of Health, can we insert state of Florida, if that's your intent, under the treatment center at the end?
Yeah, by the state of, Department of Health for the.
The state of Florida, Department of Health.
Okay. Is that indeed is who licenses these?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so that takes care of our medical marijuana, down to our medical marijuana.